This conference will now be recorded.
Calling the meeting to order. It is 10:04. This is the April 14th meeting of the City of Dennison Planning and Zoning Commission. First order of business will be roll call.
Felicia? All right, Susan Arthur.
Here.
Karen Karen.
Here.
Brett Evans. Fitz Redwine.
Here.
Josh Shearer.
Here.
Michael Davis.
Here.
Kimberly Murray.
Here.
Manjeet Renu.
Here.
Bill Medina.
Here.
And then do you want to call the public?
I think Angie's on now. She's on.
Okay. Angie, you're going to take roll call of the public until the time is correct.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Bill. What did you say?
Um, just to be clear, you're going to take roll call of the number of the public per item?
Yes, per item. They'll address one before we address it. They will give us their name and address for the record, just like we do in a regular meeting.
All right.
Okay. Okay, before we get started, let's just kind of go over the the housekeeping rules for the planning commission as we normally do. Planning commission is a recommending body. Uh, our decisions today, with the exception of Platts and site plans, which those decisions will be final, will be passed on to city council for final approval. Uh, Bill, what would what date will these cases be on the council's agenda?
So... The city council agenda item would be May 18th.
Okay, May 15th.
May 15th.
Okay, well, welcome, everybody. Uh, it's kind of a it's kind of a strange, uh, strange animal today. Um, but we're going to get through this and, uh, we'll march on and then, uh, Corona can't stop the progression of of Dennison. How's that? Uh, I asked it today since everybody's, we've got a majority of the folks are on the phone. It's going to be very important. Um, that if you have a question, if you're speaking, especially you, Commissioner Susan and and Spence. I mean, I know it may become redundant, but please, before you speak, just say, hey, this is Spencer. This is Susan, and that'll weigh up because I'm not, you know, not being able to see everybody. It's kind of confusing for me anyway. All right, so that being said, let's move into item three, which is items for consider, uh, for individual consideration. First item on the agenda would be 3A. Receive and hold report discussion. Take action on the meetings from our March 10th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Discussion? None? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes.
Motion by Mary.
Second by Brett.
Second by Brett. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Item 3B. Report, hold discussion, take action on the vacation of a minor plat located along Randall Road in Dennison. Uh, Bill?
Item 3B. The applicant. Just trying to read this. The applicant is requesting to vacate a minor plat, which is filed in 2019. The applicant will convey a 30-foot right-of-way at the time of vacating the plat. City staff recommends approval. Uh, one thing here that we would like to know, we were briefly discussing, was in the motion, as it's written, we want to add on there, "and right-of-way deed." So the motion will read, "I move to approve the vacation of the Prater Estates addition pending legal review and approval of the resolution and right-of-way deed. Our legal team is currently reviewing all the documents before they can be filed with the county. We just want to make sure we get that language in there." Previously, the plat to be vacated here. And this is the right-of-way dedication that we're discussing, 30-foot easement on the south end of the property along Randall Drive. The applicant simply wishing to vacate the previously filed plat to move forward with selling the property as part of a larger parcel. There's an aerial. And I'm present for any questions that you may have.
Any questions of staff? Okay, thank you, Bill. Is there anyone, uh, online that would like to speak on this case on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the vacation of the Prater Estates addition. Pending legal review and approval of the resolution and the right-of-way deed.
I'll second that motion.
Hey, Susan, was there a second? Was there a second? Okay.
Yes, Susan, second.
Okay. All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Item 3C.
Item 3C. Receive a report, hold discussion, and take action on a combined preliminary plat and master plat for the reserve, being 77.5 acres of the Lebonia Miller survey, abstract number 898. The City of Dennison, Texas, this is case number 2020-014-MP. The applicant is requesting approval of a preliminary and master plat for the reserve. This project site is located within the Gateway Village Plan Development, consists of 239 lots, being developed over the course of four phases. City staff recommends approval. Here's the plat here. On the south end is FM 691. West, East 131. Phase one starts over on the right-hand side of the screen. And then phase two would be up to the north, and then the rest would follow. Phase three to the west, phase four, all the way against 131. Context. Here's the location. Here's an aerial. And the zoning, it's part of that plan development, as I mentioned. Directly to the east and northeast is where you're going to have, you know, the Culvers that just went in. The hotel. Another, um, other retail and entertainment. Uh, we've been working with the applicant on this project since fall of 2019. This master and preliminary plat are approved. City will hold on to the preliminary plat. And as each phases begin to, uh, be developed and move forward, those final plats will be filed with the county. So we're present for any questions that you may have, and we recommend approval.
Any questions of staff? All right, thank you, Bill. Anyone here to speak on this particular item?
Uh, Ryan Johnson here on behalf of TPJ Properties, P.O., Block 670 in Sherman, um, Texas. Good morning, Commissioners. The, uh, Bill's done excellent job laying out our request for the new subdivision called the Reserve, uh, phases one through four. Uh, if you have any specific questions on that, I'd be glad to answer those.
Any questions, Mr. Johnson? All right, thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak on it? For or against? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve this application.
Okay, have a motion by Mary.
Second.
Spencer Redwine, second.
Got Spence Redwine on a second on that one. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. All right, let's move into public hearings. We will go to item 4A.
Item 4A. Receive report, hold discussion, conduct public hearing, take action on a replat of blocks two, three, four, and five. Block B of Saddle Creek condition, case number 2020-021. The applicant is requesting to replat four lots within Saddle Creek, phase one. This is a public hearing. City staff recommends approval. This is the proposed replat. As you can see here, the lots are a little bit larger, speaking of the applicant just trying to meet market demand. Uh, that's that's really the main reasoning behind wanting to replat these into a little bit larger parcels, rather than lots. Uh, and to address the flood plain that is directly to the east, as you know, there's a creek that runs between this development and, uh, THF Park or feeds into THF Park. Creating them a little bit more room will give the developer more flexibility on where they want to place their future house. There's the zoning. Again, it's in the Gateway Village Plan Development. And an aerial. And, yeah, I think that's it. Um, we're present for any questions that you may have. Again, this is a public hearing. We recommend approval.
Okay, any questions of staff? Okay, seeing none. This is a public hearing, so anyone that is, uh, in in the group this morning that would like to speak either for or against this particular item, please give us your name and address, uh, before you speak, uh, for the record, please. Anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here to speak into opposition? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Spencer Redwine, I move to approve the replat of Saddle Creek, phase one.
Second.
Who seconded first? Brett?
Mary.
All right, I'm going to give it to Brett. Give you the next one, Mary. All right, we have, we have a, uh, motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Item 4B. Okay, item 4B. Um, before we move any further, let the record reflect that Chairman Shearer has, um, a conflict of interest on this case. Uh, I'm going to ask, uh, Commissioner Evans to take over, and I will be leaving the meeting and return whenever you finish.
I'll text you, Charlie.
All right, thank you.
All right, Bill, item 4B.
All right. Item 4B. Receive report, hold discussion, conduct public hearing, and take action on a replat of the Irwin Edition. The addition of the City of Dennison, Grayson County, Texas, being a replat of lots five, seven, and eight, block 17 of the Munson Purimtons Edition, as shown in volume Y, page 339, Dean Records, Grayson County, Texas. Case number 2020-016-RP. The applicant's requesting to replat four lots in the one lot, build a single-family house on it. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing. Here's the proposed replat. As you can see, it's on the southeast corner of South Tone Avenue and West Day. Those are the four lots in question. Here's an aerial. And it is zoned appropriately, single-family, 7.5. It is located in the infill. Present for any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll move to the public hearing portion. Um, is the applicant here to speak? Doesn't sound like it. Uh, anyone else here to speak in favor of this request?
Uh, this is Teresa. Uh, I do support this. I live at 1012 West Day Street, which would be the neighbor. Uh, I do support it as long as with the drainage and the water issue that we do have on the on this Day Street, um, that we will circumvent the flooding of my property, um, as well as hopefully they'll get this house built so that the debris, because I've had a chain fence torn down because of debris from this property that's in the process of being, uh, I know they're clearing it off, but I'm again, the flooding from the water coming through does flood my yard quite. Every time it rains, I have a lake in my yard running through. Matter of fact, I might have to probably re-put some more dirt in my yard because my ground is is being washed away each and every time. So I do support the house of this, uh, flat being done. And and it is approval from me. But again, uh, the city would need to help with the drainage because of the water problem on this street running through my property as well as the owner's property is quite adamant. Thank you.
Ms. Ms. Teresa, if if you don't mind, if if after the meeting you want to give me a call or send me an email, we can connect and I can talk to public works to see if we can kind of identify what the issue is.
Uh, that'd be fine. I've been working with them in the past as well, and, uh, again, we do need to get something done because it is horrendous here every time it rains. Uh, coming from rain coming from Day Street, Tone Street, it's just coming through that property and then in my yard as well. But I will get back with you. And you are Bill?
Medina.
Okay, I got your information. Thank you, Bill. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Teresa. Anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Anyone to speak in opposition of the request? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this matter. Um, any other questions or comments among the staff or among the council members?
Nope.
All right, um, and I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the replat.
We have a motion by Ms. Karen.
Susan Arthur to second.
And seconded by Ms. Arthur. All right, take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None. All right, I'm curious.
I'm letting Charlie know to rejoin us right now.
I'll turn the reins, go over to him.
Welcome back. Can you hear us, Charlie?
No, I can hear you. I'm back. You got me?
Yes, sir.
All right, item 4C.
Item 4C. Receive report, hold discussion, conduct a public hearing, take action on a replat of block two, part of lot one. This is block 18 of the Dumars Edition in the City of Dennison, Texas, as shown by plat record in volume Y, page 325, Dean Records, Grayson County, Texas. This is case number 2020-008-RP. The applicant is requesting to replat a lot and a remainder tract into one lot for development. City staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing. Here's a lot in question. The applicant wishes to replat this property so they can build a single-family home on it. During the permitting process, we identified that there was an existing lot line running north to south on the east side of the property. Best we can tell is the railroad, public right-of-way, might have, uh, adjusted some of these lot lines in a regular way. So this replat is to just kind of clean that up so they can move forward with building their house. Here's the aerial. You can see that shape there. There's, you know, triangular piece at the bottom left over.
Bill, was this property, was this actually permitted, and then you found the the issue with the lot?
That's correct. Yeah, it was, um, going through the permitting process, and when it was on my desk is when we when we discovered this.
Well, there's a, the reason why I'm asking is there's a foundation already under construction.
That's right.
That's that's right. The, um, we require a form board survey at that point, and that's what prompts us to to identify, or that's what helps identify this problem.
Okay. All right, um,
Single family, which allows for a single family.
Right. Anyone here have any questions for staff? Okay, anyone here to speak in favor of this request?
Uh, this is Micah Moore, uh, managing partner of this property, uh, Six Moores LLC. Um, just chiming in here to, uh, let y'all know if y'all have any questions, feel free to ask.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moore. Any questions for the speaker? Okay, seeing none. Anybody else, uh, in the queue that would like to speak either for or against this request? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the replat.
Okay, Mary?
Second.
Brett?
Yep.
All right, we have a motion with a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Okay. Item 4D.
So I'm going to hand this over to Manjeet, uh, with the project him and Kimberly have been working on. Manjeet, whenever you're ready for me to switch slide, just say next slide, and I'll take care of it.
Will do. Thank you, Bill, and good morning, Commissioners. Um, this is an item to talk about a few code amendments that we felt were were timely. Next slide.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Sorry.
Next slide, Bill.
Sorry.
And, um, so these are amendments to the subdivision code and the zoning code that, uh, are intended to address urban design quality, environmental stewardship, as well as changes in state law. Next slide. The first one to talk about is the subdivision procedures and the definition of filed for an application. In, uh, 2019, Texas law changed significantly regarding, uh, the timing and process for, um, subdivision plat applications. And that needs to be reflected in Dennison's municipal code, and so the amendment does begin to establish a framework for a process as well as defining, uh, when an application is filed. And so prior to that, the amendment would create these prerequisite, um, requirements and that phase during which the principal project reviews would occur, and once those prerequisites were completed, then the project would be deemed filed and ready to move forward to a decision maker, uh, be it staff or in most cases the Planning and Zoning Commission. This also supports current efforts by staff to, uh, build a structured review process that, uh, we've been doing incrementally over the past couple of months, and so this is dovetailing nicely with that. Chairman, I'd be happy to take questions with the particular amendment category or at the end. It's your pleasure. I'll take questions at the end then. Uh, Bill, next slide. Um, so on this category of amendments, looks to really address, uh, urban design quality and to clarify some areas of the code that could use more specificity. So this amendment proposes to reduce maximum fence heights from eight feet to six feet for all land uses, and it would establish a maximum five-foot tall fence with 25% minimum transparency on, uh, the street side of corner lots when the fence is within the minimum, um, setback slash yard area. And also, the amendment establishes some basic visual quality standards such as consistency of materials and, um, where to show the structural elements of the fence. So that's this category of amendments. Next slide, Bill. And this shows an example of the structural elements facing the public view that would not be allowed under the proposed amendment. Next slide. And this is an example, uh, of a eight-foot tall fence, Bill. Is that correct, if I recall? And, um, that would not be permitted under the code as well. And it's also probably in that location, uh, within the yard area, so it would need to be a five-foot fence that 25% transparency. Next slide.
There's a few more that Kimberly wanted to add. Here's another example of the framing on the outside.
And that's also an example of a fence that has some, um, structural maintenance issues that the code amendment would address as well. Next slide. Uh, again, another example of the structural element facing the, um, the public view. Next slide. Next, there we go. And Bill, you want to describe this fence?
Yeah, this one is also too close to the public right-of-way. It's also constructed of metal in a residential neighborhood, um, which also needs 25% transparency requirement.
That's right. Yeah, plus the outside, the structural elements too.
Okay, and then structural elements facing the public right-of-way. Um, usually you're going to want it flipped around the other way. It kind of looks like it's backward.
And so just to summarize, um, so fences do have a significant impact on the visual character of the city. And as we work to move Dennison forward, uh, staff felt that these were some amendments that would be worth considering early. And as the commission recalls, a part of our work program includes a comprehensive land use code update that would, uh, that's would be occurring over about a year's time. Um, so these would be done, uh, much sooner than that. This next category of amendments have to do with trash enclosures and outdoor storage. Um, this would require that all land uses meet placement, design, and access standards for trash enclosures. That's not the case today. Um, and this would then allow for consideration during the site plan review process and and therefore, um, reduce the number of surprises that occur during final engineering and and plan check, uh, when these, uh, appurtenances are are often added in. So now we can have them added in during the site plan review process and have it considered, uh, comprehensively as part of the project. The other amendment would also reduce the maximum height of outdoor storage screening walls and fences to six feet and therefore no storage above that height. Next slide. Um, grading. So the the city actually does not have a grading permit requirement. Uh, grading, of course, is dealt with during civil plan review and 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 building, um, plan check as well, but otherwise grading is not, uh, regulated by the city, and this is important because the city is subject to a Clean Water Act permit, um, that is delegated from the state, and, um, there are significant ramifications if there are issues with stormwater quality, among other reasons for, um, regulating grading. So this would do that for the first time in Dennison. There are exceptions for common sense situations, and, um, this would primarily, as I mentioned, support the city's responsibility to comply with stormwater management requirements. Next slide. Um, similar to the subdivision code amendment, this would affect the zoning code. So for projects like a site plan or a conditional use permit, um, we clarify when and how an application is determined to be officially filed and therefore ready to move on to the decision maker. Next slide. And I believe this is the last one. This is, um, just bringing into alignment Dennison Municipal Code regarding, um, the commission's minimum quorum requirement for three members instead of the current five. We had an experience with that recently. That was unnecessarily problematic, so this would fix the code. A separate amendment that's that's very much identical to this affects, um, chapter two, which is not in the purview of the commission, um, but is with the city council. Um, so the two places where we see this, um, called out will be will be cleaned up in the code if the council approves the amendments. Next slide. Um, so with that quick summary, um, and the the actual underlying strikeout changes are in your packet. Um, staff recommends that the commission take public comment and then, uh, discuss the amendments and move to recommend approval to the city council. And, uh, happy to answer any questions that you might have now or after the public comment period.
Anybody got questions of staff? Okay, I have I have a few comments. Um, and I've spoken with Bill. I've spoken with, uh, Kimberly concerning this. I have a little bit of of a issue with taking away our our residents' uh, ability to build an eight-foot fence if they choose to do so. And we talked yesterday about certain situations where the eight-foot fence probably would not be appropriate. So we talked about taking this thing, um, a piece at a time and not just approve the whole the whole fence thing, uh, as it's as it's submitted and, you know, and, um, presented this morning. Um, you know, we we have a couple of things here. One of the things that I want that I want to put in here is that this the legislature went and and approved and passed some laws. the legislature went and approved and passed some laws that have the potential of being detrimental to the city and its appearance. And that's the materials thing that we've discussed. I think the reason that the legislature did that was that I think that some cities, not Dennison, but mainly the cities that are the suburbs of the metroplex and the bigger cities in state, the cities had gotten so controlling as far as, you know, what you can do with your own property, that I think that's the reason that Austin did what it did, is to give the property owners some say-so in what they build. I mean, you buy the property, you're going to build either the home or the commercial property, whatever it is. It got to the point to where you had very little say-so in how your building could look, what it could be built out of, how you landscape it. It was very controlling. And I think that was the reason that Austin took the direction they did. So we don't want to put ourselves in a position to where we're getting to that point to where there's such complaint among property owners that Austin takes another, you know, run at us. I do agree with Kimberly on several of the points that she's made in here with the fences being tall and close to the property line. It creates a vision requirement. I agree with that. I think that we need to maybe address that in saying that if you want a taller fence along the side property line, if you're on a corner lot, that you have to build the fence at the building line. You can't take it to the property line like it's allowed now. You know, especially for those who have swimming pools. You know, a short fence is just, it's a liability issue if you've got a swimming pool. And so I think we need to take those kind of things into consideration. You know, Dennison is not famous for just having an abundance of flat property that you can just go in there and build on. We have topo issues that we deal with, and sometimes a taller fence is necessary to accommodate the privacy that a person might want for their backyard. So those are comments that I've made to her. And you guys can weigh in on that. It's the commission's objective here to decide if you guys want to go ahead and approve it as it's presented or if you want to discuss certain sections of it. But that's my comment, my opinion. On the grading part of this thing, I think we need to look at, we need to break this down and look at it from a residential-commercial side. If we're going to start requiring grading plans and those kind of things for residential lots, we need to reevaluate that, understand that all of the stormwater prevention issues have been addressed in the development of that particular subdivision in its infancy. So those lots have already been graded accordingly and probably not necessary that we go back in and do a grading plan. I know there will be exceptions. The plat that you just approved, well, I say you approved, I don't know that you did, but I'm assuming you did since it was a plat. For the Irwins, is a case where we are going to have to do a drainage grading plan for that particular piece of property because it's got a lot of issues. So there will be exceptions. But I think when you're looking at a subdivision like, you know, the ones that we have on the west side of the freeway there, those grading issues have already been addressed before that was ever approved. So I don't know that it's necessary that we require grading plans for those particular lots and properties. So I think that there's some things we need to evaluate before we approve that as well. So that's my comments. I'll step aside and anybody else would like to address it, please do so.
Do you want me to provide some clarification, Charlie? Grading or comments?
Well, you know, I didn't see require, as a part of the application process, Kimberly, are we going to require a grading and drainage plan to be submitted? Is that, I'm assuming that's what the plan is.
So let me clarify, the process is different than the regulations that you're looking at today. The intended process, you've mentioned the platted lots on the west side of town. Those have already have grading plans attached to them, like you said. So if a builder comes in, wants to build a house on one of the lots, they don't need to submit another grading plan because that's already been approved. So any project that's already gone through the process and has submitted a grading plan, they don't have to redo another. So one of the challenges that we're finding, well, two challenges. One, with the commercial properties particularly, we don't know when folks are starting to move dirt. They're not letting us know. They're not communicating. Folks are just moving dirt around. We have to make a management decisions. We need to comply with our stormwater regulations. This will allow them to just alert us that, hey, you know, we're going to start our project. Second, infill lots, it's been a real problem. We've got builders that, you know, may not be thinking of it consciously at the moment that they're, you know, building the house, doing the drainage. And what we're saying is if you come in and apply for your permit, you can just get it on a piece of paper. These folks know where the water's going. They just want you to tell us that you know where the water's going and how you're going to grade it. So it's pretty simple. It can be back of the napkin. It's a higher engineer. And that's some of the process discussion we're talking now with this grading permit.
Well, I don't disagree with you on the commercial side of it because I know that it's a necessary thing to do there. And a lot of times, too, requirement of a certain amount of the engineering, civil engineering process has got to be completed along with the site plan. If the sign, you know, when you submit for approval there. And I'm not opposed to us on commercial side of it. I'm not opposed to that. It's just, you know, we get to the point to where we've got, we don't want to get the residential thing bogged down. We've already, we're already getting to the point to where by the time we pay tap fees and we pay permit fees, you know, our permits are getting pretty expensive. So you require a grading plan to be done. Then you're going to have to go back and topo the lot. And because most of the time, these plats don't have any kind of traffic information on them. But I agree with you that there are certain ways that we could, on a plot plan, we could show the direction of the drainage just by using arrows on the site plan, which is simple to do. And I certainly don't have any opposition to us requiring that in the future.
Correct. We've had a lot of problems with these infill lots, and then it becomes the city's problem when it needs to be a contractor's responsibility. So we're just trying to make everyone be more aware of it when they come in and start to plan and think about. So we haven't discussed charging any fees. We haven't, really, it's about knowledge and information, not about collecting fees. It's unlikely that we'll even charge.
Anybody else?
Concerning a different issue, I don't know if you're through with that one, but concerning the fences, we have two situations downtown. One is residential, one is commercial, fences that would probably not be appropriate under the new guidelines have both, part of them fallen down. I think some of that needs to be addressed. I don't know how, but I think it's.
Can you clarify, can you say that one more time, please? I want to make sure I understood what you said.
Okay, so there's a commercial fence that is on Chestnut across from the Dennison Hotel. And the elements knocked it over. So would the entity be grandfathered to rebuild the existing fence? Or would they have to follow the new guidelines with what we have?
Sure. I think there's a gray area between rental property standards, which in that case is an enforcement issue, and then complying with the new standards today. So in that case, that just needs to come down. It's not screening anything. There's nothing on the inside of that. It's a lappity fence. Or that's probably the first approach we might take with that specific property. Yeah. And it has to go through storm preservation.
Okay.
Kimberly, I know this, it's, this may not be appropriate, and I mean, it may be opening a can of worms we don't want to deal with, but it behooves us to sit down and look at the fencing requirements on a per-district basis.
Yeah, Manjeet, feel free to jump in here. We've had, we know that we need probably to have some more discussion. What we wanted to do was just kind of throw this at you. We did a little homework, get your reaction, get your thoughts, and then we might have to dig a little bit deeper into some of the fencing. We've talked about some particular areas in the community that maybe impacted a little differently than another. We also talked about the corridors specifically. And that's our main travel way for our residents in our communities that we may need to look more seriously about the height restrictions and transparency piece versus a dead-end neighborhood. You got a pool, you know, you're on a corridor, you need a six-foot-high fence. So Charlie and I talked a little bit yesterday. I think it was a good idea to kind of break it down and see what particular areas that the commissioners are supportive. As far as what we put together today, what part you might want a little more information on? Or you want us to research a little bit for you? So I like that approach. Manjeet?
Yes, I agree as well, so that we could look at it by land use type and as well as perhaps the urban design framework of the city. As Kimberly mentioned, the more public-oriented corridors versus those that are more privately oriented, such as residential neighborhoods that don't have a lot of cut-through traffic.
I totally agree with the framework being on the outside, being on the right-of-way side. Boy, I think you're going to have some applicants when they go to build their fences and they get their permits, they're not going to be happy with knowing they've got to turn the slats to the outside instead of them getting to look at it from the inside of their backyard. So that one's going to be, that one's probably not going to be too well received. It's a small thing, but you know, that's the whole, the whole concept is that mainly people want the slats on the inside of their yard because it's aesthetically more pleasing on the inside where they look at it. So they don't think about the fact that we're looking at it on a public right-of-way issue. So maybe we look at doing the slats on the outside if it's borders up to a public right-of-way or something. I don't know.
My picture of the residential one that I had in mind where it's on Whittard, which is one of those roads that's very close to downtown. So it's going to have to be rebuilt. And it's time, even though it is not a good fence, it's falling down, but it is built with the outside as the better side, if there is one.
Well, Bill, doesn't that fall under code enforcement if the fence is in bad shape? Can't they go out and send a letter and tell them they got to either fix the fence or else?
That's correct, yes.
So those kind of things, Mary, should be just turned into code enforcement. Let them go out and take a look at it. Even with our present-day fence requirements, we could still do something about that.
Okay, good.
Anything else? The commissioners got any other comments? Brett, Vince, Susan?
None for me at this time.
I'm, I'm with the, about the way the fence should face, especially facing public right-of-way, for sure. I don't know what I think about as far as the six versus eight. I know there's some situations where that, you know, where that could come into play. I need to look back over this a little bit better to get an idea as far as the, you didn't have an example as far as on the corner lot with the, was it required 25%? To be 25% open, is that correct?
Yes, we don't have an example picture of that, but that's where the proposed amendment would apply.
We can get you examples of what that type of fence would look like, but in the Dennison community, because we've never asked folks to do it, everyone always puts up solid fencing.
Right.
So, and one thing the commissioners you might like to do is drive around town with that in mind. Just drive around, and it's going to give you, I think, some more information. And really look at it.
Along those lines, I have seen situations where they've actually done a two-sided fence. They use the same infrastructure and the poles and all and put up wood on both sides. I mean, in certain situations, that might be a consideration.
Well, it could be, but I think it would be cost prohibitive in a lot of cases. I just got a bid for a cedar board-on-board, eight-foot-tall metal post, and it was, I believe, $75 a linear foot. So, you know, that's pretty, that's pretty tough to do on both sides. I think if you want to see a good example of a transition from a six-foot to an eight-foot fence, there are a couple of houses that are on Waterloo. Well, actually, one of them is where Hull comes off of Waterloo. The back of the house kind of faces Waterloo. And then one of the houses that faces Waterloo has an eight-foot, but on the front, it has a six-foot, and it transitions up to the eight-foot on the sides. Now, these are interior lots. Well, one of them is, the other one, one on Hull is a corner lot. But you can kind of get an idea of how they've done that. And I think that looks, that looks nice. And I think typically, an eight-foot fence is going to be a board-on-board. It's not going to be a picket fence. They're just too tall to do a picket like that. They don't last very long. So you could, maybe if we, if they want an eight-foot fence, then we could require that the eight-foot fence be board-on-board, you know, with a trim top and everything on it, you know, if they want that. If you're just going to do a picket fence, then maybe you do limit it to football. I don't know. There's all sorts of things I think needs to be talked about and explored when we're dealing with this fencing thing.
I have an eight-foot fence that's on the rear part of my, of my house just because of the slope of the land from my neighbors. If it was a six-foot, I'd be looking straight into their pool, basically. You know, a situation like that, it's not on the side, it's just on the rear fence portion. I don't know if that's addressed. I guess that would be just any eight-foot fence and not just a backing up because that's not really from, it's not on the street side. It's just, it's just my common, it's on the back type situation.
Right, and mine's the same way, Brett. I'm on Waterloo Lake, and if I put up a fence ever, a six-foot's not going to do me any good because of the topo. It's the same scenario.
I'm sorry, this is Susan. I have to weigh in on this as well because of the liability of a six-foot fence versus an eight-foot fence, not just topographically, but also the safety of children climbing that eight-foot versus the six-foot. So that's where I'm thinking as well. I know that even at my age and my size, I can climb a six, but a child is less likely to climb over an eight-foot. I, I know that even at my age and my size, I can climb a six, but a child is less likely to climb over an eight foot versus a six and get into a pool or somebody else's danger, endangered things in their backyard.
Right.
And, and another thing, I had a German shepherd that could go over a six foot fence like it wasn't even there.
That's true. It can just leap over it.
He pretty much could.
So this is, uh, this is some really good comments to, to hear from you. So I think that we would like to go back and, and look at, look at that, particularly on those neighborhoods. Pools, things like that. That's what I'm hearing. I'm hearing the commission would support perhaps some amendments, particularly on the public right of way side of things, the visual aspect. That I'm hearing that there's some support for looking at that a little bit.
Yeah.
I think that's correct for me.
Yeah, I agree.
Good.
I think we're okay unless the commission's got any other con, the other stuff, the legislative issues and those kind of things. I think everybody seems to be okay with those. We could go ahead and proceed with those this morning if, if you guys want to.
Yes, that would be, we, we would really like that to move those forward. And I'm wondering, because this is a public hearing, if we could continue the public hearing on the fencing and bring some, or close it and then bring some revisions back to you at the next meeting, perhaps?
Well, let's, if we've got anyone in, in the queue that, that wants to speak on, on the fencing issues, I think we go ahead and let them speak this morning. Do we have to close the public hearing at this point? If we, if we tabled this item till a, a further meeting, do we have to close the public hearing? Or can we continue it?
On the things that we're in agreement with? Do you want to do a partial?
You, you know, I think you can take whatever public comments are available right now and close the public hearing, make amendments.
Okay.
They'll move to adopt the next meeting.
Okay, alright. Is there anyone in the queue that would like to speak on any of these items?
This is Ryan Johnson on behalf of TPJ Properties. I won't belabor the point, but I share a lot of the same commissioners concerned with the fence issue. We face, you know, questions all the time of eight foot fence in our subdivisions that we're developing there in Gateway Village. So I appreciate staff coming back to relook at that, that issue there. The other thing in terms of the grading thing, understand kind of the reasoning behind that, but would like to suggest, you know, possibly looking at even some minimum requirements or minimum acres disturbed on that. Cause a lot, a lot of times even on the commercial side, you know, there's a little project that, you know, may be small and getting, you know, full engineering plan submitted and approved in the city is cost prohibitive at that point. So maybe you look at even some type of minimum, uh, you know, acre disturbed or something in terms of, you know, grading requirements, grading permits. And maybe even, you know, besides a blanket requirement for grading everywhere, you know, maybe specify specific instances of which, you know, a grading plan would be required there. So I appreciate you holding off on the fence issue too. I don't think this format is best for that as well, because we're not able to see staff examples of, you know, fences, what would be approved, what wouldn't be approved, just to the current format, the public's unable to see that. So appreciate y'all holding off on that.
Okay, Ryan, two things. Do y'all allow eight foot fences in, in, in your developments in Gateway?
Yes, it requires a variance from the, uh, to the CCRs we have in place, but we do grant those and a lot of them are granted for various reasons, you know, that was spoken for, for topo reasons, for, you know, extenuating privacy reasons and so forth.
Secondly, I think
Valley Creek has a lot of eight foot fences because of the topo.
Okay, and then secondly, I think the rule of thumb on the grading issues for commercial is in the cities that I've worked in, it's typically anything that's an acre or less. They don't, they don't require, and basically I think they hinge it on whether or not it's going to have water detention requirements. You know, if it's an acre or less, then there's no detention required, you know, I think by, by the standards. So I think that's where they come up with, they don't require as much in the way of grading and drainage issues either. So we might take a look at that, you know?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I just wanted to at least throw some ideas out, maybe just decide to blanket, you know, grading plans. Staff mentioned, you know, we're not sure the intricacies behind, you know, all this. Obviously there'll be more details to this, but just wanted to at least throw some out, something out to think about in two, in terms of, you know, just not, not making it, you know, too burdensome and cost prohibitive on, you know, smaller things.
Sure. Any questions, Mr. Johnson? Thank you, Ryan. Anyone else here to speak in favor or opposition? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And we will entertain a motion and we are going to exclude, we are going to exclude the items on fencing. Are we going to include the grading at this point? Are we going to exclude that until we get that a little bit more finite?
I mean, I, I, I think if there's a little bit of question, we, we wait on the, on the grading. If, I know you had some questions early and to, to get, to get our kind of, as collectively around, around that one, I think the,
Seems like it just needs to be restated. I think we got some ideas out there, it just needs to be put into words.
Okay, Kimberly, do you and Majid have any problem working on that just a little bit more as well?
I guess any clarification on what your concerns are? Because it seems your concerns are in the implementation of it and the process rather than when the permit is required. What we listed for you as draft text is, is when it is required. So if you, I mean, I, I don't, if you need more questions answered as to us, kind of the point, how we would implement it, like, uh, has already been discussed. We're not asking for folks to go out and get engineered plans that didn't already have them as part of their project. It's really addressing a, a real issue in the infill areas where folks' drainage is going off on other people's property. And we really need to work with our builders and contractors to, to eliminate that. And we need to know when folks are going to start their projects. And that's, those are the reasons behind having, having this, this permit. And it's really a checkbox on the application that says you can start your project in 30 days, check the box. So from what you've received here, I understand that, that's not being clear. So if you want us to come back with more narrative and more of the, the understanding behind it, then, you know, that makes, that makes sense. We're happy to do that. That's helpful.
What if we break it into two and we, we get a little bit more clearer on what we're going to require for residential, uh, construction? And then we'll flip over to the commercial side and say, you know, we, we're going to require this level of, of drainage and grading, uh, information, you know, at the site plan approval process or, or whatever. And then if it's below a certain sized project, then, you know, we're not going to be as, as strict as we would be on a large, larger scaled project. I mean, is that, is that doable?
You know, these, the, the areas where the grading, where it's required is, you know, we need, we need to know all that now with our current development. So that's not going to change. I also think that if you're, you can't compare the, the lots over on the west side of town with a, with an infill lot. You know, those have already been, have extensive great grading plans, but playing, you know, the whole thing. You can break it up like that because that's technically residential. So
Yeah, and you know,
We're going to require more than, you know, the replats that were approved today that got infill lots going on, that houses going on, so.
And a lot of these infill lots too, a lot of the drainage issues that we're having is not necessarily a result of, of the way the lots graded, but, um, the lack of infrastructure that we have in this infill area is also creating part of the problem. And the, the Irwin plat is a perfect example of that because the drainage that's coming down Day Street and the water that's coming off of the right of way onto that property is creating the majority of our drainage issues with it. There's not a whole lot that you can do. We have no curb and gutters over there. We have no infrastructure to, to, you know, to help handle that situation. So, um, yeah, we got a problem in the infill. I, I do, I do agree with that.
I guess my, my question, I guess, is what is involved in order to get the grading permit? I see it's when it's required, but not, I think more, I guess, specifically, Kimberly, as far as what is required in order to get the permit, I guess, to have an idea as far as, you know, the cost on the, on the owner developer or?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and those are, these are all really great questions. Our thought, like I said, is, is unless the, the builder tells us when they come and get their building permit, you know, we're starting next week. We just don't know when they're starting. You know, so, so it's, it's almost like a, let us know when you're going to start digging. So we have folks going out there, like on our commercial properties, we've got works folks going out there and taking a look. We just don't know when they're starting. We want to be sure that, that folks just want to move some dirt, that they're not starting for a while. You know, they're, they're taking the measures they need to take according to the state laws regarding stormwater and all. And it's just a, basically just alerting us so that we can help and go out and, and make sure things are going well. That's really the reason for it. So if you come in and you check the box and say, I'm starting in 30 days, that's all you have to do. You don't have to do anything else. You know, if you're going to start six months from now, you give us a call and, you know, we give you information and then, you know, we issue. So it's, it's not meant to be a cumbersome process or, or cost more money.
Yeah, okay. So, I mean, there's not, I guess, besides the paperwork to, to fill out for the permit itself, but it's not, you're not requiring additional engineering work or documentation from normal.
Correct. So like an infill lot where the, the builder's got, did replat, he's putting on another house. He comes in, he's got a survey, like Charlie said, he draws some proposals, just, he shares with us what he plans to do. Now, like Charlie mentioned about Day Street, you know, if it's a city issue and it's running down the road, that's, we're not asking him to address something that's created by the infrastructure. It's more of, you know, share with us where your water's going on the lot and when you grade off the, grade off the land. But I understand, I, I think we, based on this conversation, if you're comfortable with tabling it and us bringing back more clarification, happy to do that.
You know, I, I brought this up in, in some of our builder luncheon meetings that we've had with the mayor and city manager and the building community. I've seen, and I, I know we're getting, we're getting better as far as what's required for permitting on the residential side, okay? The commercial side is a, is a completely different animal, but we've allowed builders to submit information for permitting that's inadequate, in my opinion. And I've been doing this, you know, a long time and, you know, came out of the metroplex to here. So, you know, I'm not necessarily saying we have to do what the big boys do. I'm, I'm not, but what I'm saying is that, you know, when I submit a plan for a permit, a residential permit in, in the metroplex, I have to do a site plan. Now, it's not a detailed site plan like we do on a commercial basis. We call them plot plans and they're more like a, a cartoon versus a detailed site plan, but they're, they're to scale. The footprint is actually depicted on the plan to scale. All of the dimensions for side setbacks and all the easements are noted on the plan. And I've, I've really stressed the fact that we really need to require those. Don't just bring in, like, like, you know, Kimberly mentioned a while ago, a napkin and you draw a box on there and say, here's my lot, here's my dimensions, and then draw a box in the middle of it and say, this is, this is where the house goes. You can't do that, you know, that you have to have a little bit more detailed information. And I think a lot of our problems could be solved by requiring that. And I don't know if, you know, we require the form board survey. But, you know, a lot of the issues we have with those could be rectified if we had a detailed scaled drawing of how the, the project's going to be, you know, on the, on the site.
We, Charlie, we do, we require, we, we changed our procedures to require a survey with the building permit application. The city administration heard quite a few comments from our builders.
Yeah, but Kimberly, that was, that was, that was taken out. We no longer have to submit a survey at permitting.
But now you're the form board survey force, so if you don't know where your lines are.
That's an after the fact. Exactly. Exactly.
Application on, we're back where we were, so.
You know, and here's the thing, you don't necessarily have to have the survey because if you've got a plat of the subdivision, you can draw the plot plan, site plan, whatever you want to call it, to scale and based on that information. And we, then we would have a scale drawing, but I've seen plans submitted. Now, I think it's a little bit different now, but I've seen stuff submitted that, I've seen floor plans submitted for permit, there wasn't one dimension on them.
Today?
How do you know, you know?
You speaking to the past, you speaking in the last year?
Well, I, I, again, I, I've, this is, I've seen this and it has been probably a year or so since I've seen information that has been submitted. I mean, and I know that they've added some requirements to the, to the residential submission that, that we have to, but I mean, there's a, there, there for a while was a huge lack of information on the residential side that I felt like needed to be added to keep variants processed from being overdriven and, and plus it just gives the staff, when they're reviewing stuff, they have a better idea of what the builder is actually doing out there.
Right. So we're, we're, we've changed, we changed things quite a, quite a while ago. So we're not accepting the napkins anymore.
That's good. That's real good. So what do we want to do here? We want to exclude the fence information and the grading information for the time being and then approve everything else?
I agree with that, Susan.
If Susan's in on that, Brett, what do you think?
Yeah, so we're, so we're proceeding with the trash enclosure. The filed in the quorum.
Yep, yep. Yes.
Chairman Shearer drafted some suggested motion language based on your discussion, if, if that would be helpful.
Okay, let's, let's, let's poll all of the commissioners and see what, what they want to do. Mary, what's your feeling? Well, Brett, you never did say.
That's, well, that's what I'm saying, we're, you know, tabling the fence and the grading for now and proceeding with the, with the, with
Everything else.
Everything else, basically.
Yep. Red wine echoes what Brett's saying.
Is that
Mary?
I'd say approve everything with the exception of clarification on the grading and the, and better discussion on the fencing.
Okay, Susan?
Agreed with, yes. The fencing and the grading table and we'll discuss that.
Okay. Jeet, you want to, Jeet, you want to go over the motion information that you have there?
Sure, and feel free to, to modify. This is just a suggestion based on the commission's good discussion today. So the draft language would be moved to recommend approval to the city council of the amendments to the subdivision code and the zoning code regarding the definition filed, quorum and filed, uh, quorum and trash enclosures. And then number two, return to the planning and zoning commission in May for further consideration of fences, outdoor storage walls and grading that addresses the commission's comments and questions.
Good to me.
No move. Did you get all of that?
Brett, since, since you're the only one with the legal mind on this, we want to go ahead and make that motion.
Hold it all down.
Yeah, you could simply say, uh, move as, as suggested by staff and then vote on it.
I move suggested by staff.
All right.
I'll second that.
I second that. Red wine second says.
Hey, I think Mary had a second on it first, Ben, so we've got a first and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Okay, motion carries. Item four E.
I'd like to just thank, thank the commissioners for that great discussion. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank y'all for your hard work. We appreciate it, guys.
All right, this is our last one. Item four E, and sorry for them being out of order, I, looking back on this, this probably should have been placed before the previous item. Item four E, see report, hold the discussion, conduct a public hearing and take action on a replat block four, Richardson addition, Grayson County, Texas. Two point five eight acres in the Y S D L and H A poll survey, abstract number one four six zero, case number twenty twenty zero zero five R P. The applicant is requesting to replat one lot into two lots located in the ETJ. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing. There's the posed replat along Richardson Road, as you can see, was previously one lot, divided into two about one point two acre lots. Here's an aerial old airport heading over to the west. And as it is in the ETJ, there are no zoning, so I don't have a map to show you. I'm present for any questions that you may have. We recommend approval, and this is a public hearing.
Any questions of staff? I see none. Anyone here to speak in favor of this request? All right, anyone here to speak in opposition to this request?
Yes.
Okay. Can I have your name, please? And address?
Yes, this is Judy and Bob Rao. We're at two six nine Richardson Road. Our property ID number is R eleven thirty two seventy. It's, uh, we own a house on five acres and this property is just directly across from us, across the road from us. And, um, I, I believe Dorothy Hensley is also on the line and her property is right south of us, so she is directly across from this, um, property. What we have been told is that they're planning on putting an RV park there. And I, oh, I think all of the neighbors in this area would oppose an RV park, so I don't know, uh, you know, if anything can be done about that, but that's why we were calling in to oppose it.
Okay, let me, let me address, first of all, the reason we're here today, okay, is strictly to discuss the plat. Future development plans, uh, they're not on our agenda, uh, and we're not at liberty to discuss anything about that, okay? So we, we, let's terminate that conversation immediately. Now, at some point in time, should they proceed, uh, this is in the ETJ, so there has to be some sort of probably communication with the city about future plans. So it could be a case to where that winds back up on our desk at some point in time. But this morning, the only thing that's on the agenda for the commission to discuss is the plat. So we're going to have to restrict all comments just to the plat alone. And that's for, for legal reasons.
Okay, may I ask a question? Could we be notified in the future? That was brought up to you in the future. Could we also be notified so, uh, you know, again, we could, uh, object to them are there?
Let's get clarification from staff on the notification in the ETJ.
Okay.
Um, Charlie, this is Kimberly. I just want to note that, uh, Grayson County does not have any zoning. Property is within Grayson County. It is out of the city limits. So therefore the city would not have any input or say over what was built there. So this will not come before the board or staff if the applicant chooses to build whatever there. If they just, they subdivided further and they need to build infrastructure, a road, then, you know, then we would, just like we are here today with the replat, then we would be involved because it's in the ETJ.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I'm sorry, ma'am, we're, we're not going to, we're not going to, uh, be seeing it here.
Okay, thank you very much.
But we, this is Dorothy Hensley, but we do have the, we just still have the right, I assume, to say, yes, we oppose the replat.
You can say that, Ms. Hensley, but by state law, if it meets all the technical requirements and we have staff's approval, uh, the, the planning commission has no right but to pass the, the plat. We have to approve it by state law.
Well, and I don't mean to be insubordinate, but then why would we even be included on this if we have no say or no vote?
I've asked that question at least a million times. I, I can't answer that question. I mean, maybe staff can't. I just know that by state law, if a plat meets the technical requirements of the jurisdiction that it's being done in, then the planning commission has no authority to, to deny the, the replat. If there were variances that were attached to it, we could, we could deny the variances, but we cannot deny the plat by state law. And my hands are tied. And I totally understand what you just said. I've asked that question multiple times. Why do we have to have public hearings, uh, on a case that we really have no authority over it anyway? So, I, I, I can't answer your question because nobody's ever answered it for me.
It, it's a state law. It's not something that's, it's implemented, just to be clear.
This is Susan. Would there be any question from our board, uh, on the development, uh, concerning the trees in that plat?
No, ma'am.
Not at this point. And I don't think, I don't think, Susan, since it's outside of our jurisdiction, I don't even think our tree preservation ordinance would cover that, would it?
No, that's, that's what I was going to say, is our landscape requirements, our tree preservation ordinance would apply, uh, some development standards would. Like Kimberly mentioned, if they want to add a road through that property to access whatever may be there, it would need to be concrete, curb and gutter, just like a new development. However, use, we can regulate use and the amount, and what ordinances are going to apply are minimal.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Kimberly, is, I, I have a question. Is, I know there's no zoning in place, but isn't there still a process that they have to go to the commissioner's court if they develop that property with site planning and, and everything?
I would defer, I would defer them to Grayson County and speak with their staff.
Okay.
Not anything that is going to be over.
Ms. Hensley, that would be my next, that would be my next phone call, would be down to the county, uh, to the, to Bill Major's office to, to find out what the process would be for development through the county's, uh, channels.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, my question is, if, if this is Grayson County, why is it coming before Madison's planning and zoning for replat rather than some other body?
In the ETJ.
Okay.
It's in that extra fringe thing that we have.
Got it.
Extra territorial jurisdiction.
There's someone else that was about to speak?
Yes, it's Robin McGurk. I had, uh, questions and comments as well. We've, uh, lived at that property since the sixties. It's, it's directly adjacent, uh, to them on the south. And, uh, of course, uh, someone mentioned a moment ago, I think it was Judy, mentioned that they, uh, she had questions about the trees and whatnot. They've already bulldozed about seventy-five, eighty percent of the forest that was in that vicinity to begin with. And we're, we're planning on pursuing, or at least been looking into, uh, having the fifteen acres that we have there, uh, considered as a wildlife, uh, area that's, uh, protected somewhat. So, uh, direct encroachment to some degree on the perimeter of what, uh, we were, uh, considering in that regard. So that's obviously an issue, an issue with us, not to mention, uh, the fact that, uh, one of the reasons it was built in the first place is that we've got, uh, some interest in privacy, that, uh, that's also going to, to place in jeopardy when you, uh, consider the fact that the, uh, whatever housing goes up there is going to be, uh, much closer than it had been simply a part of the property, uh, block that was already there.
Well, I understand what you're saying, Texas, it's, it, I, I hear you. It's just we're, we're dealing with something that's completely and totally out of our hands and we have no authority whatsoever to, I mean, if we're in the city limits, it would be a totally different animal, but it's not, you know? And, and, and I think the only recourse you guys have, uh, would be through the commissioner's court at, at the county.
And I believe that precedent too, in that area.
Let me, uh, let me ask you a question. Does it matter? Does it make any difference if there's a, uh, a burial plot or cemetery on that property? Does that make a difference?
Yes, I think there are state laws that, that, uh, have, uh, bearing on that, but again, it's not part of our, uh, that's not part of our stuff. I think that's through the state.
Okay. As far as the wildlife, uh, uh, issue, uh, that would be something, you're saying we'd strictly have to take up through the county?
County and state probably would, yeah, I would think so.
Okay. The other thing I was wondering about is, as far as the replat, uh, was one of the reasons why people move to a rural location is so that they have additional, uh, space, privacy and independence and so forth. Uh, if you've got, uh, some facilities being promoted or offered there such as, uh, um, an RV park or, uh, trailers that are going to be, uh, constructed or whatever brought in. Uh, what I'm wondering is what would the impact of that probably be on the property values of people that are directly adjacent to, uh, that, uh, that property?
Hard to say. It's hard to say. You know, my, my question is, if, if, if they're planning on turning this thing into an RV park, um, I'm wondering why they would plat it into two lots? Why would they not just leave it in one lot if it was going to be an RV park? Are they not plating it into two lots to, to sell the lots off for residential uses or?
I, I don't know. I would, I would like to know, uh, what the builder, their intentions are, I suppose. That property, of course, had all been part of the block of property that, uh, had been there for the last sixty years, so I'm not sure what, uh, the.
Let me ask you a question. Have you guys, have you guys made an effort to contact the property owner and to find out what their intentions are?
No, I haven't, uh, talked with him. I'm not sure that, uh, I know who that property owner is.
Well, um.
Or where they live. I, I talked with the fellow previously, uh, when they were bulldozing the, uh, the area because they were pushing things over onto our fence at the time and doing some damage to that. So I had some contact with him at that time, but that wasn't of particularly friendly nature.
Well, uh, I mean, you can go through the county to find out who the owner is on the property. You can go through G C A D to find that information out. I think at this point in time, you guys just need to probably sit down and have a meeting with, with the property owner to find out what his intentions are and, and, um, you know, then you'll know how to plan your strategy, uh, in the future. But again, I want to go back to, you know, we're discussing matters that we shouldn't be discussing anyway. We just need to go back to the replat and that's where, that's where we're restricted. And my recommendation would be that you guys contact county and then contact the property owners and have discussions with them in the future. But as far as this morning, uh, it, we, we need to take action on the replat. And so, um, if there's not any other questions on that, then we need to move forward with it.
The only other question I have is, as far as that particular piece of property's concerned, they have, uh, come over the, uh, property line and there's a, uh, a piece of, uh, I don't know, a structure that's been built there, I think, that people simply use for celebratory purposes, you know, get out there and have parties and whatnot. It's actually over on our property. Does that affect or make any difference to the replat process itself or not?
No, sir. That's an encroachment issue that you need to take up with them and, and, uh, that would be a legal action, I would assume, that you'd have to, have to proceed with.
Small thing here. It's not, it's just factual information, but everybody is entitled to have survey information and I think that it would be good to find out what your survey lines are.
Right, right. We had our property surveyed a couple of years ago and it, that was, uh, something that, uh, uh, I discovered that, that had been done.
Again, that's, that's something, that's something totally off the wall, has no bearing at all on the plat, so nothing we can do about that either.
So let me make sure I understand, as far as the replat process is concerned, anybody who submits a request for replat will be approved, uh, regardless of what, uh, anyone else?
No, that's not, that's not what I said.
Okay.
If you, if you replat a piece of property or you plat a piece of property, there are a set of standards that the city of Dennison has adopted and you have to meet the requirements of those standards in order for that plat to be approved, okay? What I'm saying is that once they have, the city has approved that information and they have satisfied all of the requirements that the city has set forth, then we have no, we have no choice but to approve it.
And they.
Well, there are requirements for a plat and a replat, but those requirements have been met for the city or it wouldn't be on our agenda today.
I see. But, so they've already met all those standards as far as you know?
Yes, correct.
And that does include a survey?
Yes. So when you're looking at this plat and when this thing is filed at, at the county, you can go to the county and get a copy of this plat, um, if you don't already have a copy of it. You know, I'm, I'm looking at it on the screen right now and it's got all of the bearings for the property, the, the, the points of beginning where they start the survey. And so all the information necessary i- is, is on that, is on that document. And you can get a copy of it when it's filed at the county. Now, it hasn't been filed as, as of yet, but when it is filed, you'll be able to go to the county and get a copy of it if you want to do so.
Okay, is it, is it considered appropriate for them to go ahead and develop the property in step with their plans for, uh, replating before the replats done approved?
Well, they really haven't done anything. They haven't proceeded with anything. They've cleared some property, they've cleared some trees, but that, again, nobody's got any rules that says they can't do that for any reason. So they're, they haven't done anything. Nothing's been built. I mean, you can go out there and grade the property, you can take the trees down, you can do whatever you want on that piece of ground. And there's really not anybody, based on what I'm hearing, the. on what I'm hearing this morning, that has any control over it, so until they start, you know, building structures and infrastructure, then we're really not developing anything.
Well, they, actually, they've built a large tent there that's been there for, I don't know, a couple of years, I think, and a gravel driveway up to it, so that constitutes some development in my.
Well, maybe in your opinion, but it might not be in the rules of the development as far as the county's concerned. And again, we're still off base here, I've got to terminate the development discussion, and we have to stop talking about that and go back to the plat, because that's all we are here for this morning, and we don't need to be discussing anything else as far as development. We have no authority, we have no reason to discuss it as a board, so let's go back to the plat, and, I mean, I don't want to cut anybody off, I don't mean to be sharp or rude, but it's a legal thing that we need to get back to the plat, that's our, that's our point of interest right now. So are there any other questions or discussion related to the plat that we need to, that we need to hear? Seeing none, is there anybody else in the queue that would like to speak concerning the plat or the replat that we have on the agenda this morning? Hey, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion on the replat.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the replat.
Have a motion by Mary?
Susan will second.
I have a second with Susan. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries, okay. Number five, staff updates. Thank you guys for being with us this morning, sorry we couldn't do anything.
Thank you for the information.
Got any staff updates that we need to talk about?
I don't have any additional updates for this meeting, we made for the next one.
Okay, we have no update? All right, well, in that being said, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to adjourn.
I second that, red wine.
Hey, Susan had the first, Vince had the second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, seeing none, we stand adjourned at 11:37 a.m.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, guys.
Have a great day.
Okay.